It's 6:04. I now call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. All seven members are present and we have a full house tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And our one discussion item is negotiations. We're going to listen to our administrative team up here first, and then we will open it up for discussion amongst board members. I will be using a speaking chart just to make sure that we're, nobody's monopolizing the time. So just a little more formal tonight. So Scott and Dan, we are ready for you.
Great. Good evening, board members. Thank you for calling this special session this evening so that we can give you and our greater community a clear picture of where we are in our licensed negotiation process. As you are aware, SFEA declared an impasse on March 17th. At the end of the presentation, we will share what lies ahead in reaching an agreement. Tonight, this presentation will cover two main topics that remain open in the bargaining process. Those are compensation and class size. On the topic of compensation, the district's proposal has reached the ceiling of what we can afford. Our current proposal reflects a restructured salary schedule based on one originally proposed by SFEA. It honors the priorities that SFEA shared with us while maintaining the financial stewardship you have placed in us as district leaders. It is also aligned to our district's commitment to offering our teachers a regionally competitive total compensation package. For the record, I want to be clear and state that as your superintendent, I am committed to providing all of our staff with the best financial compensation package possible. It is also critically important that we balance that concept with our challenging budgetary reality. Those circumstances are as follows. District enrollment dropped 10% during the pandemic. It remains 6% lower than our pre-COVID numbers. State school funding is not keeping pace with inflation, and unlike many states, Oregon has never fully funded its public schools. Beginning in May, we will come back to the bargaining table with our classified union. And finally, our ending fund balance of $2 million, or 4%, which is far below the board policy of 10%. To put this in perspective, this would only cover 60% of one month of payroll. These are facts that cannot be ignored, facts that if we are not diligent in dealing with in the short term, will become long-term budgetary problems. And from here, I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
Since the pandemic started and then coming out of the pandemic, workload has been the number one voice of concern for teachers across the country. Even before the pandemic, the teachers of the Silver Falls School District have been known as those who go the extra mile for their students. And working with SFEA, we have collaborated to try and resolve workload issues. This has resulted in MOUs such as Canvas stipends and retention bonuses. SFEA leadership has always advocated strongly while maintaining a positive labor management relationship. Through this bargaining process, we have been able to meet and respond to several of SFEA's requests. These changes, through SFEA's advocacy, created wins for our teachers. As a district, we want to provide contractual language that validates their hard work by providing more time or compensation. On this slide, you can see the agreements that we have reached with SFEA that achieves this goal. We have reduced student contact days by one to allow teachers to have a work day after winter break. We have changed our professional development day to a teacher-directed day in the spring. We will provide additional contract days for counselors, sped teachers, and ELD specialists. We will compensate at the per diem rate when teachers are asked to sub during a prep period. And in our latest mediation proposal, we have offered to provide additional compensation to counselors and specialists when covering classrooms. We have provided all elementary teachers a 30-minute prep period during the school day. We have increased supply budgets for all new teachers, and we have added home base language for district specialists. With the class size article, we have attempted to respond to teacher concerns through our proposals. We have taken an article that was one page, increased it to two pages to provide a more collaborative process for teachers and principals to work through class size concerns. Our most recent proposal also provides annual ratios or targets to guide this process. We share the same goal as SFEA and all its teachers in having small class sizes. Throughout bargaining, SFEA has voiced its support of our principals and how they are doing everything they can to either advocate for more staff or provide aid support to classrooms. We believe in the ability of our principals and teachers to collaborate and determine a menu of options to alleviate any class size concerns. Each school setting and classroom situation could require different solutions. One of our key concerns with SFEA's class size proposal is it gives individual teachers the ability to veto the entire menu of choices in order to obtain a pay increase. This is not collaborative and creates an uncertain cost variable for the district. SFEA's proposal also gives teachers the ability to file agreements over class size issues. We support the ability of individual employees to file grievances when we, as a district, make mistakes. What we cannot support is the ability to file agreements based on class size. For example, two new students moving into an attendance area of a school with a large third grade class. Situations like this, when we want the teacher and building principal to collaboratively determine the best course of action to support that teacher. Our position with SFEA throughout bargaining has been consistent. We, as the district bargaining team, with your support, have been clear that we will not agree to any of the following: establishing static class size guidelines, allowing a teacher veto power over possible solutions, or allowing grievances over a subject where we lack full control. We have offered process language and have been open to proposals from SFEA around process. What we cannot allow is language items that would add costs and subject the district to grievances. I'll turn it back over to Scott to share our financial proposal.
Throughout bargaining, we have focused on providing our teachers a regionally competitive total compensation package while also acknowledging the limitations of our budget. In the first mediation session, SFEA proposed a restructured salary schedule. While it took some time to provide a thorough cost analysis, we see it as the potential breakthrough that was needed to help bridge the gap that had eluded us prior to mediation. On this chart, you can see where we started last May and the progress we made through February, when mediation began. We are unable to show you SFEA's proposals from March 9th, as the details of those proposals are confidential, per SFEA's request, as is their right during mediation. However, you can see from the trajectory of this graph that we are moving in the right direction toward agreement. I will leave you with this slide, which shows the salary increases that would go into effect this school year upon ratification of the contract. Please note that this entire presentation will also be available on Board Book, linked from the district website, immediately following this meeting. In closing, although impasse has been declared, we are ready to return to mediation on April 5th. I am committed to providing all of our staff with the best financial compensation package possible. Teaching is hard work. Our reality is that we have a fixed budget, and we have to do what we can to support our teachers within the confines of our fiscal responsibilities. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to our board chair.
Thank you. So let's start with questions. I will just, we don't have to go in an order. I just want to make sure everybody has a chance before we've got to repeat. Somebody want to start?
I can start. Have, and I think you've shared some of this information with us before, so I don't want to put you on the spot, but have you experienced class size issues this year in particular that you've not been able to resolve through the process that you've suggested here?
We have not. We've addressed three class size issues at the beginning of the year: a 13th teacher at Buick Creek, a 7th teacher at Central Howell, and an extra kindergarten teacher at Robert Frost. There are reasons for all of those, mostly COVID-related, and we didn't know how many kids were coming back to school. So those are the three that we've taken care of formally.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and jump in and ask a question. That's all right?
Go ahead.
So the changes to the proposed class size article, I'm wondering how the previous version has been used over the last, however long it's been in place?
The current contract language we bargained in in the last ratifications that came about in January 2020. And so there hasn't been any use of that procedure, granted COVID was during that time, but there has been no use of that process.
Excuse me, I'll ask a question. Can you guys think of any, I don't know, perverse incentives that might occur should that be adopted with static class size in the contract?
Well, I think the, as the presentation presented is that, you know, if you're, if you're, if a guideline or a great static target is at 25 and you're at 26, you know, is there, would there be a reason not to seek a financial opportunity versus, you know, aid or something like that? So with the current proposal that SFEA's proposed, it's a mutually agreeable proposal. The teacher has to agree to it. So the options really become deferred to the teacher as to what happens. So I don't want to make any assumptions about people's motives or intentions, but that would, that would be there.
Go ahead, Lori.
One of my questions, I sent it to you earlier today, Dan. One of the things that I just would like to have a little bit more definition on, and I think it would be good for all of us to hear this. I understand that caps are just not something that you can negotiate due to the ebb and flow of students coming to the district. Can you explain what budgetary concerns occur if we are working with targets in class size and having our teachers to have some control or weigh in on that?
I think anything that would go into, whether you call it a cap or a target or guideline, would, if there's a number in the contract that if exceeded, then, you know, what's the process? And so our proposal at the table is to establish annual targets that if there's an exceeding, it goes to the collaborative process of trying to resolve that with the principal.
And that is B1, A, B, C, and D, right, of the, what's in front of us?
Yes.
Those are the options?
Yeah.
And so some of those options have, some of those options have dollar amounts that would be associated with them. Is that correct?
So as far as being the A, B, C, and D?
Yes.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, just even Scott's example of adding teachers has dollar amounts, but you know, those are oftentimes to, you know, implement in how your budget, but determining, having a cap that not sure, that we don't have control over how that, that would work, puts the uncertain budget decent in that equation.
Because we can't control who moves into an attendance boundary.
Right.
All right, I'm counting that as my question.
Is there, I've been watching this discussion go back and forth for a while, a year. Is that, but I've never seen a set of data that shows what the current class sizes are. And is there, is there a set of data that both sides agree on, you know, where are we on class sizes? I've watched this bounce back and forth, but I've never seen this, I've never seen, you know, this sort of class sizes are. Is there, is there something, you know, that can be fleshed out and so we can kind of debate where the, where the current situ, where the current situation is?
Well, we've been working on putting together a dashboard where people can go see where every current class size is at. We've been trying to work on, on something like that to try to be transparent with, with that piece. You know, we present to you monthly what our enrollments are, and we do know what, how many teachers we have. So I don't think it's too big of a secret as to what each class size has.
Okay.
Your turn.
I'll, I'll fill the silence for a second. Do either of you know where these, the proposed numbers came from? They're tied to anything specifically, or?
This, the proposal, I think it's a combination of Westland-Wilsonville has similar language, and then I think Portland Public has the language that has the mutually agreeable, and if nothing can be resolved, then there's this salary piece.
I was more specifically interested in the actual numbers for the, or the ranges for the class sizes, you know, the 15 to 20, the 20 to 23, et cetera, et cetera.
So you think-
I'm not totally sure where those, where those were picked from. I think they're pretty close to what I saw in the Westland-Wilsonville language.
Go ahead.
So for some of our current classes that, that may have been identified with our administrators as maybe getting to the point where they're, they're a little bit large, are we, we're doing our due diligence to ensure that there is educational assistance or other type of resources deployed so all those teachers have help in, in areas where it might be a little bit larger of a class than desired?
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's the, the principals are doing the best they can with their resources to deploy both where there's large class sizes or class makeup. Or we see, the data says that a certain grade level needs help, and so we're going to allocate those resources there. So, you know, I think that our principals do a really good job of trying to address where there's either, like I just said, large class sizes, class makeup, or data suggests that kids need more support.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Well, most, most of my thoughts aren't questions. So if we're doing questions, I'll wait. If we're doing commentary or discussion, I-
Let's stick to questions for right now.
Mine aren't questions.
Okay.
I'd like to know-
Go ahead, Lori.
I'd like to know what, when a class size concern arises and a teacher goes to a principal, what are some of the limiting factors for principals in those cases, and when they have to move up to consult and the resources that are involved?
On some part, K-8 classrooms, if there, you know, if there was even a budget for another classroom teacher, it could be where, where we put them. So you could have a space limitation. Again, if, you know, you have a large class, but you have, you know, you know you have some needs elsewhere for aid, so you're moving the aid to the larger class size or keeping them where there may be a more demonstrated need. So those are two limitations that come to mind, is both space and the ability to deploy assistance or, or hire additional teachers.
I've got one more question.
Go ahead, Owen.
Sorry, this is, this is kind of not something that I've thought about before, but I'm curious, if our district is unique relative to the districts you've worked in before in terms of projecting class sizes, in terms of how much variability we have in class sizes, either due to our K-8 system or the, you know, the smallness of some of our schools, are, just give me a comparison, I guess, of your experience?
I would say that, that they're very similar in terms of the class size average. We're right in line with other school districts in the state. The districts I come from, to answer your question, that's absolutely true.
Dan, do you want to?
I think the configuration does make it unique when you, for especially our K-8s, if you get a large class come through, there's, you know, oftentimes not a lot of space. So you do have, have that versus, you know, possibly our in-town schools where if you have three third grade classrooms in, you have, you know, you can try to spread that out a little bit more. But I would say, to echo Scott's, our class size averages are at or below most, most districts. But we do have, we do have pockets and bubbles here and there.
The other thing that's so unique about Silver Falls is our configuration, of course. And it's also what makes our district so special. And so we also have, you know, can run into, you know, the, the class size bubble that's coming up through the grades, just because, you know, a class had more kindergartners that year, they're going to have that, that same cohort for nine years. But all of those situations, our principals do an incredible job of working with their staff to, to solve those issues. We, in the three years I've been here, I've never had to step in to assist a principal on working out a solution. Now, when we got to the three teachers that we allocated, that was due to enrollment. So we didn't know who was coming back. So we had to, we had to staff our district based on numbers that we didn't know were factual, because coming out of COVID, nobody knew. And so we are under-enrolled in one school, and then September came, they were, their enrollment went up, and other schools' enrollment went down. And so we had to make some adjustments. I will tell you that most school districts, most school districts do not allocate additional staff until October, until the October count. So our allocation was done way before that. And so I, that's a very common practice in most districts. When you get to September, you need to make some adjustments. Some schools are, are over-enrolled, some under. And so either transfer or allocating an additional FTE is warranted.
And when you say transfer, like in our school district, it could mean a transfer from one building to the other-
Yeah.
-because one was under-enrolled and one was-
Yeah.
And that, that would not be the best situation.
No, it wouldn't. And of course, what we would want is to ask for volunteers and try to work out a solution. But I don't see that happening here in this district. And I think there are a lot of things that we enjoy in this district that a lot of other school districts battle with. And that would be one of them. The, the district's never been truly in a position, year after year, of having to allocate additional FTE to schools or hold some back in an FTE bank and then dull them out once the final count comes, the first week in October.
Other questions before we have just general comments amongst ourselves?
I, I have a question about the rules around labor actions and class size. So I know that there was a bill that passed the legislature, maybe the last long session, that allowed class size to be a mandatory bargaining topic. And, but how does Title I play into that and, and strikeability? I tried to read up on it, but I'm not sure I totally understand.
My understanding of it is that class size is a mandatory subject of bargaining to which could be, it could strike upon is, is only for Title I schools. So if there was a class size proposal specifically around Title I schools that we were unable to reach agreement on, then there, there would be a lot to strike under that. So that's, that's my understanding of how that works with what was passed in the legislation, is that class size for Title I schools is a mandatory subject of bargaining.
And we have four Title I schools?
We have four Title I schools: Robert Frost, Martin Twain, Buick Creek, and Silverton Hill.
Okay. And that sometimes changes, right?
Did you get that right, Leslie?
You did get it right, and it hasn't changed for several years.
Okay, so that's like consistent. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, comments. Jonathan?
Well, I'd like to piggyback on the uniqueness of our, of our district, right? We've, about half the kids come up through K-8, the K-8 system, and, you know, the rest in town, which are now K-5, so they used to be even a little different. The, it, it's interesting, as I think about this issue, you know, an arbitrary number of students as a goal makes sense on paper, maybe theoretically, but within our configurations, I've got 15, 20 years of personal experience at Buick Creek. I personally worked with Principal Palmer. Almost every year, I was invited as parent teacher team president at the time to brainstorm how to handle this year's class configuration. Why? Because at a K-8, it's different, every, or it can be anyway. And so having some arbitrary number of goals or number of students as a goal seems like it's, it's kind of problematic. Principals and teachers need to work together on this, to me. And it seems like if, if we start putting these kinds of numbers in there, it's going to be more and more difficult ultimately to support our K-8 configurations, which I personally, personally am in favor of. I don't want to see contract language begin to be a, a means of chipping away at, at what I think is a really unique and beautiful system in this district. And so that's a really big concern of mine as we start looking at this, because there's a lot of, I think, value in that system. But you're just as likely, the year after you have that 28, heaven forbid, 30 kid classroom, to get 18 to 21 the next year, right? So it's, it is a bubble. It does go that way. There are, you know, single, my, my son Nate was in one of those 28 to 30s. He, his whole one went through. Turns out, his class was pretty easy, actually. My daughter was in a split. She was one where the, there were so many kids, they split. There were two of her grade rolling through Buick Creek. Small classes, much smaller, hovered around 20 typically. But her classes were a pain, an absolute nightmare. So here you've got 20 kids in a class that's below their threshold, that is a nightmare class because of the particular makeup of the particular student. And you've got my son's class at 28, which was more or less a breeze rolling through, at least comparatively. And, but the arbitrariness of these numbers really do nothing to reflect the nuance necessary to manage this. And I frankly think the principals and their teachers ought to work together. This doesn't feel like an appropriate item to wedge issue this. I, so for a lot of reasons, I don't support it, but that's one of them. And I wanted to piggyback on Owen's comment about the configuration, because I think you're spot on.
Well, one thing that I want to just try to point out is that I, I think in general, we don't necessarily have a huge class size problem, but I think it is really hard. Just teaching in general is really hard right now. And one thing I wonder about is like the, the, well, what if, what if I have this really hard, large group? And that's the thing that I wonder if that, those are the strong feelings that might be supporting the SFEA proposals. And I don't necessarily disagree, although I will say I know you meant nightmare in the best possible way. But I, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with anything you said. I just wanted to balance that out with what I think, I perceive teachers might be thinking about. So just going to put that out there. And I'm marking it down. It's my one.
Yeah, and piggybacking, well, you know, together with what Owen had asked and Jonathan had talked about, the, the hard, fast numbers, I do, I, I do like the fact that in the last, in the March 9 proposal the district put forward, that we will establish class size targets. And that was the word we discussed, that, that we would look into that on a yearly basis because of the fluid- basis because of the fluid nature of our district, the, the unique makeup of our K eight and our, in our in-town schools. Because that's how you serve our students best, based on each year. Each year is going to be a little bit different than the prior. You could have 28 one year and 17 the next. It happens. And I guess, especially in our, in our, in our K eight buildings. So I do like, you know, this, where I see it as a, as a middle ground of, we can't establish numeric targets, and, and the district will. And then there's a remediation process following that, that will, that will, will work to find a solution to those, to, to any of the, the classes that are a little bit overloaded. So again, I think given our unique nature, we need unique solutions. And I think this and B gives that middle ground of finding a, a unique solution. And, and also is one that is in other districts' language, in bargaining language. Or, so yeah, it's, it's, it's one that has been used in other districts around here, so.
Well, I just, I think, I think where I'm stuck, because I, I think I'm like-minded with all of you, that smaller classrooms seem like they would be desirable and certainly make a difficult job maybe a little bit easier. I think where I'm stuck with this language is the uncertainty of it, especially with regard to any fiscal impact, as well as our lack of control over it. And that comes, that sort of becomes front and center with the grievability. That makes me really concerned that we would ever put ourselves in a position of not being able to control circumstances that would lead to pretty serious outcomes. So I think that's, because I, I support the intent, but that language, I just don't feel like we could really responsibly agree to. I think it just leaves us really exposed in situations where we don't have any control over the situation, potentially.
So can I ask you this, Janet? What do you think about, and I don't, you know, we haven't been, the only, I haven't been able to study both of these except for in these meetings. So if I'm, I'm sorry if this is naive, but we had a proposal that brought class size issues to the board, right? There was some.
It's still in our proposal.
Okay. It's still, and then I assume that the concern is, well, the board could do nothing, right? But I think to us, that is a big deal, because we use that information for superintendent evaluation. Like, if you let that get to us, then there's a lack of leadership happening.
I agree.
Right. Okay, so you, I just wanted to ask how you felt about that situation.
Yeah. No, and I agree with you. I think that would be, that would be a really serious thing if we were to, to be in a position of considering that, you know, that, that the measures that had been taken had been so unsatisfactory as to have made it all the way up to the board. You know, we'd really need to scrutinize what's, what's going on here. And I, I would take that seriously. You know, I, I understand the impression that that seems maybe just pro forma, but I don't think this board would consider it that way.
If I could just add to that, I think that was a significant change in what we proposed, because the previous language, it was all that really happened, and again, it never did happen, but what could have happened was the superintendent would have to make kind of an annual report into part of the budget process. So it was something that was tucked away, not very visible. And so what we've tried to bring out in this, you know, process of didn't work out at the building, comes to the superintendent, comes to you, it comes a lot faster publicly, in a public meeting versus being a part of a notation that a superintendent makes in an annual budget process. So that was our intent behind that, and it's still within our proposal.
Others?
Yeah, I guess I'll just comment. You know, Jonathan mentioned incentives or perverse incentives, but just incentives in general. I, I don't know. All parties in this want lower class sizes, the board, the administration, the teachers, the parents, the kids. So this isn't really a conflict. Everybody, I mean, everybody wants that. And I don't, and I'm, and I'm afraid of over time, it, you know, the word grievance is a real touchy term, and everybody wants to avoid it. And, you know, I think Jonathan brought the topic, and I think I did it at an earlier meeting at some point about, you know, there's an incentive to have 26 easy kids, and, and that's a perverse, and I don't think that would do that. But there's also an incentive for, that would be a example of somebody, of a teacher abusing it. But that's also an example of, we don't want to hire another teacher or pay somebody. So, well, hey, let's just move a teacher from this building who has excess capacity over here to get the class sizes down. And that, you know, whereas maybe a collaborative solution to let this bubble pass through is, is better. So there's perverse incentives on both sides with something like this. And it just sets up, it sets up more conflict, I think, than is necessary. It seems to be, seems to be working, and that's kind of, sometimes it takes longer than we want. Coming out of COVID was hard. And I especially, you know, agree with the comment that it's just, teaching right now is just really hard. I hear it every night.
I think one of the challenges is, you know, with, with a school system in an urban setting where you've got 500 or 700 kids in an elementary school, and you've got eight or nine second grade classrooms, you can peanut butter across, you know, things kind of can average out, and you can move stuff around. Like I said, our configuration issue, you, you can't peanut butter it across when you have one, you know, classroom per grade go into a building. You know, you can create complex, you know, there was one year, we had a, a, a one, two, three blend at Buick Creek, one year only. And, you know, I don't, I'm going to guess, teachers aren't going to be thrilled with, well, guess what? This year, you've got a crazy blend. And this, next year, you might have a different crazy blend. Why? Because we're going to meet the numbers you put in your contract, right? So another perverse incentive that could happen, right? Another challenging option to rectify an otherwise seemingly workable problem. Again, I personally have experience at Buick Creek, that same problem's been there for generations, and it seems to have been working out pretty well. At the end of the day, there are bubbles that go through. And then, again, the next year, you might have a completely different class. I don't know. I, I've, I've been asking, I've been trying to hear, what are the compelling arguments? I listened. Three years ago, I listened, I really pushed hard for some of the things that the teachers' union was asking for. I haven't heard things that convince me or compel me here. I, I just haven't. These are not, this doesn't feel, I, I keep looking for that, well, where's that, that example of, of where the principals refuse to work collaboratively with the teacher? I keep not hearing about those scenarios. In fact, I keep hearing generally, broadly speaking, that teachers really appreciate the principals. And yet, none of the principals support this language either. So how come, right? It's, it's really, to me, I'm just not, I've not heard any compelling argument, but I do hear it from the administrative team and from the principals. I, I hear it from them why it's problematic. And so for me, that's kind of where, what's, what's leading me to support the current district proposal.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just quickly say, Jonathan, I agree with you, I feel the same way. I think, I think when I look at it, I just, I just keep coming back to the fact that it doesn't, in my view, it doesn't seem to do anything better for the kids than what we already do. It, it offers some compensation to some teachers, which may or may not have a harder job based on having some extra kids. I mean, I can see where extra kids would be typically harder, but like you said, sometimes it's not. And so then it's just this arbitrary, to me, it's a little arbitrary compensation. And I haven't heard, you know, I feel like we're spending all of our budget, basically. I don't feel like we're holding anything back. I haven't heard if this has been tried to be quantified to it. I mean, I haven't heard the number, what it's going to cost. And then I'm thinking ahead too to, well, gosh, if we don't pass a bond, then our budget's even that much more stretched, because we are going to have to do some things to keep, you know, kids in a building that doesn't have water coming in. It's going to be crisis mode at that time, right? So anyways, I just don't see, I just don't see it benefiting the kids.
So is that a question about cost?
Well, I guess it would be, yeah, a question. Is that, has SFEA tried to quantify this in their proposal?
Well, I would not receive the.
The costing.
The costing.
Got it. Yeah, and I, I would just say that I, that's one thing I did want to say that I, I like about what happened in mediation is that, you know, there was transparency. The district bargaining team was asked, what's your best offer? And the best offer was given. And so I really appreciate that transparency. And I also appreciate pushing the limits as far as we can. And we did that with our last contract too. And I, it, it makes you a little nervous about the risk of, you know, like, are we, are we set, do we not have enough in our reserves? But I also like the idea of doing our very best for our employees, because that's what's going to translate into what's best for our students. And I also wanted to say that I really like that you guys offered additional funds if the state school fund comes in at higher than, than what we're budgeting for. I think that's super fair and, and transparent, just like this, this is what we're budgeting on, this number. If the state school fund comes up higher than that, we will have more money to give for compensation. So I just wanted to say that, that I, I personally appreciated that. I also appreciated the flexibility of taking the salary schedule that, that the SFEA gave during mediation, a new structure, a recalibrated structure, and the district team saying, okay, let's, you know, that's, you know, we are totally open to that. So thank you for that openness. I think that there could be, you know, some folks might feel like, oh, we don't have enough control over that, but it, but this was just a real openness to, to that proposal. So appreciate that.
And if I can just add to that, Jennifer, I think it seems like there was a lot of progress made during mediation on the financial piece, in no small part due to several members of SFEA who put in a lot of time to work with Dan and with our other folks in the office to crank numbers. And I think that process obviously yielded some, some real benefits in terms of a mutual understanding.
Yes.
And an openness, again, about what, what all the data, what do the numbers say? And really being able to sit together as a team and come up with the, with an option that's good for staff and also good for the financial stability of the district. So I just wanted to commend them on all the work that I know that they put into that process as well.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll say that as well. I've been a part of the district bargaining team since, since last April. I really, really commend, and my hat's off to our SFEA bargaining team. I felt like the last session was extremely productive. It was a, it was a long session, you know, from, from nine until nine, but there was a lot that went on. A lot of creativity, a lot of well-thought-out proposals, a lot of what-ifs, you know, and, and going back and forth, both teams in good faith, really working hard to, to, to meet something. And I think, I agree with you, Janet, having seen the, the evolution of especially the, the financial package, the, the redrawing of the, of the salary schedule was extremely creative and extremely well-thought-out. Took some time to analyze, took some time to run the numbers, as anything does. But I think it built in some, some really good, some really needed adjustments within, within our salary schedule. I also appreciate early on in our bargaining time that, you know, we, we were able to make some adjustments to that far right column and, and the steps where, you know, we were falling short on our salary schedule as compared to other districts of the similar size and in the area. So I, again, I want to commend FS, SFEA's team for really working hard to bring some great, good ideas. And, and again, I think we, we, we as two collaborative teams worked extremely hard on that financial piece to give the best foot forward we can to tie into financial, potential financial futures that might come our way, and we hope come our way. We really need that from the state. Hope we can all rally together tonight to lobby our state to, to pour money, more money into education, because that is truly what's needed. But I, I, I appreciate the partnership we've had between both district and the SFEA bargaining teams to really, really try to work this out and, and come to a wonderful agreement.
I also, you know, just to echo that, sorry, am I, am I monopolizing? Sorry. The, there was, we did have a meeting with some of the bargaining team members on, on both teams, came together a few weeks ago, and talked about just general process stuff. And I really appreciated that. I think that we've done a great job as a community to try to keep things really respectful and listen to each other. And, and I think that I've seen differences on how both sides communicate since that meeting. And that makes me feel like both sides were heard. And that is not necessarily the norm, I would say. And so I just wanted to shout out to all those people who are listening to each other, even though we don't necessarily have the exact same perspectives.
I guess I'm out here, but I see all of you. And I know that you're here because there is something that's not being resolved at a level. I am concerned. We are at an impasse with the teachers, and I hear what people are saying. I'm trying to be respectful, but things aren't all sunny. And I'm very concerned what's going to unfold in the next few weeks. I do think there is a disconnect. I am not completely understanding why we can't come closer together. And it's probably because I'm not in the meetings like you are. But I know I've been listening to the teachers, and they're on the front lines. They are the ones that nurture our students day after day. And I'm really concerned for them and what is going on currently. And I just can't ignore the overwhelming sea of red in front of us. So to me, we still have a problem to work through. And we've got some issues there. That's what I wanted to say.
Yes, I would want to say one more thing about the, the language in here. You know, I think, I, I come back quite often to the metaphor of an ecosystem, and that, and that really, that is really what we are. And that if one part of your ecosystem isn't healthy, then the whole ecosystem is out of balance. And so how do we really look at this process as taking care of all of the aspects of our shared ecosystem so that the whole thing is vibrant and healthy, right? And I know there are no easy answers for that. If there were, we would have all figured them out years ago. I think how that applies to some of the language in here that I'm concerned about is, you know, one of the rules in any kind of a contract or a policy is, don't, don't be so prescriptive that you tie your hands when this is, it's supposed to work for you, right? It's supposed to be something that, that makes your, your, your job easier. And what I, what some of this language, and it sort of goes back to what you were saying, Jonathan, is it takes out of our control, our shared control, as in shared, as in administrators, teachers, principals, a way to solve that problem. It, it takes that opportunity to come together and say, here's a problem that we have. How do we collectively gather around it and solve it by saying, well, no, now we just need to do what's in, what's in the writing, what's in the print, right? And that may or may not be the right answer. And so I know that requires a lot of trust, and it, and it requires trust moving forward that we will count on each other to, to show up and do the right thing in those situations, and to collaborate genuinely and honestly. that we will count on each other to, to show up and do the right thing in those situations and to collaborate genuinely and honestly. I think if we don't have that, we have a bigger problem than just some language in a contract. I don't know. I, I know this process is necessary. It's unfortunate that it is always feels by, by design adversarial. That feels very archaic to me, feels like there really should be a better way. And I would just really challenge us all to find that better way.
My concern is that the trust is lost and what we need to do to rebuild that. That's what I've been hearing. I don't think we can deny that.
I guess I'll respond to that. I don't see anything in this proposal that rebuilds trust. I see things in this proposal that create complexity and division. So if that's the way to rebuild trust, then I feel bad for us already, I guess.
Well, yeah, with respect to the, the financial component particularly, I mean, the numbers, we're a public body. The budgets, the numbers, the dollars that we have are out there, they're audited, everybody can look at them for themselves. So it's not a matter of trust, as far as that's concerned. It's a matter of, here's the pot, what's available? And how much are we making available? And that's, you know, those are mathematical certainties. So, you know, we might disagree over how much ending reserve balance we need to carry or something like that. But I already look at that, and we're already way below what our agreed-upon target for that is, you know? So we've flexed a long ways. And we flexed on that, I think, in the last time we bargained, when we had a major catch-up. I mean, there was a lot of angst at that time. I wasn't on the board, but I remember hearing that. And, you know, the district went a long way and said, okay, we will spend down our ending fund balance well below what our target is. And we haven't been able to catch up. You know, we don't have a way to catch up, and it's likely that we won't ever catch up. Seems like one of the things that is true is once you eat into something like that, you know, it's just very difficult to find extra pennies to build that back up. So, yeah, for what that's.
I have another question. This is for Dan. So I know that after impasse is declared, both bargaining teams need to present their best and final offers to the ERB and cost them out. So are these two things before us what we think, or we don't, we don't know what the SFEA best and final?
What is before you is what I submitted to ERB.
Okay.
And we've already submitted ours.
So we've already submitted to ERB.
Okay.
So that is part of a large document of all of our final offers. Both parties submit basically their final offer and a costing sheet.
Okay.
We're in.
Any other questions about that process?
What's the timeframe then for Turk, or like, how does that?
Midnight tomorrow is the deadline to submit.
Okay.
Technically 11:59.
And then it's posted on the ERB website?
I'm not sure how fast they turn that around, but then it is posted on the ERB website.
And at that point, that's, the 30-day cooling-off period's already started, or is that start when that's?
That starts after, on that date.
When we post, they post the?
Yeah, when they post that.
But there are still sessions scheduled during that time?
Yeah, we have sessions scheduled on April 5th and April 17th.
Okay.
That's good, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize it either.
It's got scheduled this week.
Okay.
The title cooling-off period is a little misleading.
Yeah, it sounds like it means nobody's talking to each other.
Right, everybody to your corner.
So.
Okay.
Normal mediation sessions like we conducted in the past.
It'll be, to my knowledge, they'll be, they might send a second mediator there to help move things further or move the lines of communication. So there might be a second mediator there.
Oh, yeah, I think I read that, two mediators.
Not uncommon.
Yeah.
So will those sessions be all day or have the potential of being as long as needed? Or is there a time limit on?
There's no time limit to my, I'll start at 9:00 AM.
Okay.
And that will be here?
The district office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are the only two, so the only two items are compensation and class size, right? Or is there technically others that are sitting out there?
There's, the unresolved articles are three, there's grievance, Article III grievance, Article 10 to teacher discipline, and then class size and the two compensation articles.
So there's more than just those two that remain?
And our mediation proposal, we, and what I submitted to, what we submitted to ERB, we reopened Article 12, which is work year, work day, where we added that provision in for class counselors and specialists. So our, our last package proposal added that to it. And so what's submitted to ERB has that reopened, even though it had been a T-day.
I also have to say, I really appreciate the, you're talking about the counselors and what was the other group?
And specialists.
When they sub, that they get, they get compensated. I, I really appreciate that because when I sub, I don't get compensated. So thank, that's really good for our teachers.
Credit to SFE, that's an SFEA strong advocate, which I mentioned, their strong advocacy in my opening statements, and that comes from their strong advocacy for that, so.
Because the money's already in the budget to pay somebody else, so why not pay the people doing the work?
We've heard that.
Yep. Any other comments or questions?
I'm just going to say, I truly am hopeful for the next mediation session. You know, I, I do, even though it's been a long process, I think every time we come to a greater understanding, and again, based on the activity last, the last session, I truly am hopeful that even greater understanding will be, will be achieved and that we can, and we can come to a, an agreement very, in a very timely fashion. I'm an optimist, and I truly believe that. And again, based on how hard we worked and how long we worked last time, I am truly hopeful for the next meeting.
I think the offer, you know, is very fair, right? I mean, I think, you know, having known what the financial situation was, knowing what the, the final offer the district has made on the financials, it's extraordinarily fair. It puts us in a possibly tight spot, depending on how everything plays out. We have other factors, one brought up, you know, what if the bond doesn't pass and we end up with, with maintenance questions? What if, you know, what, we've got classified bargaining coming, there's all these wild cards hanging out there. But it puts us in as close of a position to being, you know, here we are, but probably still, ending fund balance is probably not going to build back up anytime soon, but, but here we are, right? So I'm proud of the team for putting that together. And I believe that a lot of what's been offered in this bargaining session has been done in good faith and is very fair. So I'm proud of the team.
Yeah, I just hope that, you know, I'm going to piggyback on what Aaron said. Perspective is everything, right? And like I mentioned, I think the why is super important. Like, like this is the what, but what is the why behind it? And I hope that everybody involved is, they're listening to the, to the why and trying to gain that perspective. Because it is, it is, I think, teachers work super duper, duper hard.
Well, I think that's a perspective that every one of us shares. You're talking with each one of you publicly and privately, and the fact that we would all personally like to pay our teachers more, that's without a doubt, you know, unquestionable. I've said this to teachers and other people, you know, the third party that's not in the room is the taxpayer and I guess the governor. You know, I think that's where more effort in Oregon needs to be paid because we just, we just don't have the money to pay them what they deserve.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess, let's echo on Owen's, Owen's comments about more, you know, more effort towards the legislature. I spent a little time surfing around today on the Oregon School Board Association's website. And they're, they're, they have launched a big effort for that. They're, they're doing their part. I mean, our, our association is doing their part for that. And I guess that's where the, you know, the effort needs to be pointed towards Salem, I think. You know, our, we can only do so much here, we don't have, we don't have the piggy bank. You know, we're not the ones cutting up the pie for the state here. You know, and I appreciate, I mean, I, you know, it's, I appreciate the, the effort to get the, you know, just to run it just as tight as you can. You know, it all comes down to money. The way to get class sizes down is hire more teachers, but we got, we're already at a low ending fund balance, you know? I think, I think the average teacher costs is, you know, wages, taxes, purs, the whole thing is close to 110,000 a year. It's expensive, it's worth it, but it costs a lot. And we have, we have classified bargaining coming up soon. And the last time they negotiated was right during COVID when financials were very uncertain. And they didn't get, they didn't get the calls that the teachers got at the time. So I'm hoping that we're going to treat those folks fairly too.
Yes.
I'll second that. I completely agree. It's a big priority.
I agree.
All right, without objection, we're adjourned.